We're going to call the meeting to order. It's September 11th, 2013, and 5:07. 2.0 adjustments to the agenda. I don't have anything. Does anyone else have anything that's come to your attention?
Do you want to point out that there was an adjustment to one of the consent minutes on the consent agenda?
Sure.
Just keep it normal, yes.
In case you didn't check your email yesterday for some reason, I know all of you are just sitting glued to your computers waiting for emails to come from CSSU. Anyway, Sandy just sent out minutes from June meeting.
24th.
Thank you. June 24th meeting that were slightly corrected. So you'll want those versions, that version for the consent agenda. Audience and communications, 3.0. Elaine, did you want to...
Yes, actually, this might be a good time to say that the board chairs know this. On Sunday night, Bob Mason's mother-in-law, in-law, his mother passed away at dinner. So it's very sensitive for both of them. I'm not on the panel here tonight. And that means that there might be one board or another that will not have coal representation at their meeting. I'll be floating around, but I'm mostly going to float around between the two boards that don't have somebody assigned. The good news is that we always keep the September agenda pretty light. And the other good news is that many of the items on your agenda are things that we will have done here first and when. If you need me, just tell me, send me a text, and I'll help.
Okay, thank you. And just a reminder that September 17th, there's the VSBA regional meeting that's to be held in Winuski, starts at 5:00. You get a light meal, sandwich. So if you're coming right from work, they'll have something for you.
I can't find it. The break entrance, that's what I'm saying.
Driven past it and I can't find it and I get off the wrong exit.
Yeah, so check your Google Mac before you go.
Well, John, you'd love to hear from John.
Happy to see you. Coming to visit.
And then you've probably also received a notice from VSBA reminding you of the October meeting at the end of the month. And so just put that under calendars if you can, if you have any intention of going. Sandy might, will probably send us a reminder about that. Anything else? 4.0 presentations. Well, I should say something also as far as communications go. Just a reminder, it feels like ancient history because we haven't been together in so long, but just a reminder that the State Board of Education approved adding an additional board member to this board from the CVU board, increasing the CVU representation from three members to four members. That will make this CSSU board a 16-member board. They gave us that for two years. So we've got authorization for two years to pilot it, see how it goes. And meanwhile, I know that CVU needs to have a meeting to determine who is going to be the fourth member. So at our October meeting, we'll have a fourth CVU board member here.
Meanwhile, do we have to vote twice, right?
No.
Squeeze both hands.
Quorum then is 70.
Quorum would still be nine.
Nine?
It was nine before.
One more.
One more. So you need to have a majority, more than a majority, unless we split a body in half.
Let's not do that.
No.
We haven't had the need to do that so far. I don't anticipate that.
And just a reminder that part of the representation piece that we brought to the State Board of Education was that because of the population of our students in this SU and the grade level, it's more of a grade-level representation for our particular SU. It may not be a configuration that works for other supervisory unions in the state, but it's one that seems to work for ours. And the statute allows us to have some determination over what works for us as long as they approve it. So we'll give it a go and see how it works. 4.0 presentations. The 4.1 budget process and plan you have in your packet, the assumptions and a budget calendar. And Elaine and Mike, what are you going to take us through that?
Yep, so here's a cheat sheet. So if you turn to 7.2, in particular, the budget calendar piece. I'm just walking through what our plan is. So I'll have to get around. And while that's getting around, because I bet not everybody here knows, Mike Madoff, who's sitting to my left here, is our finance director. And he volunteered to serve in the group. He can answer probably any question that we would have around budget finances, any of that, when we get to the audit phase. So thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Everybody has a cheat sheet? So basically, what this sheet does is it puts the process and timeline just in a linear form, but you've got the calendar in front of you. If you prefer to look at it through the calendar, just look at 7.2. For the SU budget process and timeline, we start tonight with the budget assumptions. I believe you've had the budget assumptions for a bit, and I know that 19 board members had some conversation about the assumptions when we met a couple weeks ago for a negotiations meeting. So later on in the agenda tonight, you'll have a chance to act on that. At the next carousel meeting, there will be a purchase services presentation. And purchase services are that part of the SU budget that is a one-to-one correspondence with what you say you need for us to broker for you. So a really good example is the school psychologist. You tell us, each individual school says to us, we need three days, we need two days, we need four and a half days, and then that gets plugged in. So the other areas that are like that are technology, occupational therapy, is that it? Early interventions, many, many of the special education areas. But you tell us what you need. And while that sounds like you've got a lot of discretion, that's tied into what you'll see in the locals, the service planning. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. So the presentation will be in October. In November, there will be purchase services approval at the local level. So you'll hear about it in October, have conversations at your board meeting, again, conversations in November, and approve your purchase services. And at the SU, there will be a core budget overview with decision packets. So what does our budget look like in its totality? On November 20th, then the SU board will meet to do a total budget overview, including what the assessments would look like based on the work that we've done to that point. December 18th would be the final preliminary approval, because by design, even though we approve, we need to have something to plug in the numbers in the local budgets. The final approval really doesn't happen until after all the local budgets have passed. So that there is an opportunity to, if there was something that could be changed, to change something at the SU budget if the local budgets didn't pass. So that's the SU budget process in Taiwan. It really mirrors what we've done in the last few years. And I believe it captures the conversation that we had last year around making sure that the locals have time for input on the purchase services before we get to a final. The local budget process and timeline, again, this mirrors what we've been doing. Although I think budget assumptions are a little bit earlier, we'll vote on that locally tonight. Service plans is to let you know that that is a major piece of work that Megan does with the administrators, both special ed and local administrators, to review what are the needs. So student by student, what are the needs to meet our legal obligations to provide them with a free appropriate publication? All of that to the state by October 15th. And then they review it and say, yes, this looks like it makes sense, or hey, you guys, you must have it in mind, you know where you're going to be doing this with this. Or mostly, we get... That's how the process works. There is an outside check on that. Over at the October carousel meetings, the locals will have purchase services sessions and inputs about what it is that you might want CSSU to work with you on. And a conversation about whether or not your local board will have a budget forum or not. That's a community input forum where you invite your community in and say, you know, before we start the budget process, what are you thinking? What should we have in our mind? Most of all, the boards have done that. The K8 boards have been doing that for the last... At the end of October, all the baselines will go to the principals. That will be an amalgamation of what the service plan's numbers are, the assumptions, and the purchase services. So the principals will have that then. And then from November to January, we start our bi-monthly, every two week meetings with each of the boards. And at this point, we follow the same sequence. The first meeting that we have, after all of the stuff above, is reviewing baseline budgets, facilities, and SU assessments. So that's the first meeting. The second meeting is instructional programs, including special education. The third meeting is decision packets. So are there changes that the administration is recommending? So those can be additions, but they could also be deletions to a program. They could be a substitution. We'd like to take this money and use it here instead, that kind of thing. The fourth meeting is looking at the first-time final budget and what the revenue tax implications are. And the fifth meeting is your article approval meeting and a hearing with the public. Any questions? Or it pretty much mirrors what we've been doing with it, you know, some tweaks.
Well, last year, we tried, I remember, we found an experiment where we had the principals come in with their education-driven budget.
Yes.
Really just what they wanted for education, and it was, it kind of took a week out. So we're not doing... And then we came back in the board and said, well, this is what we had in mind, and then we started negotiations. And I remembered it was, we struggled with it at CVU.
They struggled with it pretty much everywhere. It is hard. It's funny, I just had a conversation with one of the principals today about this. It puts people in a funny situation when you say, tell us what your vision calendar is. And for principals, I mean...
Vision budget.
Vision budget. I'm sorry. I'm talking about vision calendar. Vision budget is, and so you're asking them, what is it that you would do that would really make a difference? And they come back to you with that. And meanwhile, here are all the, the context that's going on. You know, people are saying, we need to go keep our budgets down, we can't have any additions, blah, blah, blah. And so it can feel like, why did we do that? And in some cases, it was even worse than that. It was sort of like, what were you thinking to bring that to us in this climate?
And to put us in a bad situation, because here, the principals did this work and brought this great stuff in, and we had to say, nice, but there's no way.
Right, so that's not in there. Where that will show up, though, would be under decision packets. That's still an avenue for a principal to say, you know, I've been looking around, I've been seeing what's going on, and I can tell that we could do a much better job if we had this. And then the conversation becomes, can we add that? Do we need to trade for something else? What are the creative ways that we can do that?
And just to move this conversation along, there's going to be discussion at local level, but I'm also recalling that, at least in Heinsburg, and I think we heard at CSSU board, and I heard some other board chairs talk about it, that we needed to have decision packets that were related to reductions. So that the administrators were coming to us, knowing that we're going to, our budgets are all going to be pushed, that we need some help in tiers of decision packages. Is that right, Keith?
I think that might be an individual board conversation. I don't think that is universal.
Yeah, and I...
And I think that's the conversation you should have tonight, set your expectation.
It was not a long summary. It was a really long...
Too short, too long. So we're running about 10 minutes behind, but want to make sure that we give this the time that we need to give it tonight. Did we need to spend time with the assumptions?
Is there any discussion of the assumptions?
This would be, this would be the time to do that, I think, because we're going to be voting on it.
Yes. Do you have a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Whatever, I'll put it up.
I'll speak first, and then Mike will jump in if it doesn't sound like... This is the reality of the information that Bob gets when he calls the various fuel providers.
So the Department of Energy works, right? They have projections for fuel prices for the next 18 months, right? It's flat tomorrow.
Currently?
For 2014, for the fourth quarter of '13 and 2014. Just for an example, I just, curious if this were... I don't see you building like a cushion that's not necessary, or if it was...
I think it's kind of interesting what you're saying, because the reaction of the administrators when they saw this on Monday at our meeting was to say, why are we saying actual plus 5%? Why aren't we looking at a three-year average? Because they all remember the year, two years ago, when we built on actuals and really got hit and didn't have enough money in the budget, because we had an easy winter, and then the very next winter was a more traditional winter, and we needed a whole lot more oil. So they're wondering about maybe doing a three-year average instead of...
Would be, it hasn't moved for three years. It went up from 2010 to '11, '11, '12, so far, it's...
It's stabilized.
It's been flat.
So I'm hearing the question being, how are the percentages derived?
It just seemed like 5, 5, 5, which is fuel, oil, diesel. It was just kind of a draw on a number so we have a cushion, or is it actually like we felt?
Right, so the question isn't deliberating whether or not it should be 5% or 4%. The question is, how, what's the process?
I've already asked yours. We've used 5% for utilities, for instance, as an increase. It's just something we've used each budget process.
And would the same be true on insurance? Is the general insurance 10%, workers' comp 10%? Are those speculative or...
We have used those in the past. Bob Mason did a lot of work with our carrier, both the general insurance and workers' comp insurance. The actual rates have dropped for the current year, so we will analyze the savings, but we're looking at using 10% over actual, because we never know how our experience will be with workers' compensation, which affects our loan rate, which it seems to calculate for premium. So if we have several claims or a high dollar value, it'll go against our experience and will increase our rates. It's hard to predict that.
Excuse me, Mike, caca was having a hard time healing.
Sorry, I'll take that. So it's hard to predict what general insurance or workers' comp, it all depends on our experience rating it. If we have several large claims, which we have seen in past years, we could have a 20% increase. This year, we're able to negotiate. We had some large claims drop off, and Cindy can talk about that particularly, but it's dropped off and helped our rates this year, our actual rates. So we're predicting 10% over this year's actual.
Is that based on, say, it goes on history, right? So you know what's going to drop off and what's not to drop off? So you'd have a pretty decent estimate?
It's on history, it's also in the markets. It's what the state rate is set at and how the markets are responding to the insurance coverage.
Do we know that? Do we?
No, no. We don't, we don't know that. We don't negotiate. We won't know next year's rate till...
So Eric, you may recall that last year before we did some finalization with our budgets, we did make some final adjustments in the assumptions. So what this does is it allows the budget process to move forward, they can plug numbers in. But if we find out, for example, that this bit is, you know, going to be 10%, we'll get an adjustment prior to our final budget adoption. So this, you know, it's a plan. It's best, it's an estimate based on the best knowledge that they have available. But it's not, you know, but there's the opportunity to adjust as we move forward.
Am I right in hearing that we aim higher and expect adjustments lower now?
We've adjusted in other directions as well in the past.
Yes, it's gone a little ways, and you'll see like health insurance. We won't know the final rate until January, maybe even February, but we'll have better information if we've gone back and adjusted the budget as we get better information for the budget development process.
So when we adopt these budget assumptions tonight, assuming that the board agrees to move forward with that, it's not locking us in, it's allowing a budget to be built. Is that fair?
Does that answer your question? I mean, do you feel satisfied that there will be an opportunity to adjust as new information comes up?
Yeah, I mean, I guess my question would be, you know, particularly for someone who's having an actual contract, say, you know, Betsy Transit, if you tell them we're expecting 5%, I suppose they would...
That's probably the contract, correct, for that one.
So that's, I guess, a big milestone. Is that a contract to be...
I'm not sure where we are in that sort of circle with charlatan transportation. I know there's...
Cindy knows.
I think you just signed in the... Really? In June, I'm not positive, which is why Bob lists the actual percentage. If you look up under teachers where it says question mark, when we're under negotiations, we don't ever publicize what we're, what the settlement is. But in executive sessions, you'll direct us what that number should be for your assumption purposes. But for exactly the reason you said, we don't put it on here, because then everybody knows what's in the budget, so...
Other questions, Elaine, to the assumptions? We're going to see that again as an action item. Okay? Thank you. It is helpful to understand the process, because a lot of people will look at this and not understand it, and it's helpful to review it.
Maybe we'll just be too fat, because it's, you know, it's the basis we make a lot of decisions on, and so there's a lot of stuff in there. It's typical. But most of the things on here are relatively small amounts in the big picture. So you change from 5% to 4%, you might even see it rounding, but I agree, Eric, that it should be accurate. I did notice that, too. Another coincidence, they're all the same.
And I captured that as a note, so I'll talk to Bob about that.
Maybe it's just kind of what we do every year.
You know, I think something that we can do next year is just have some kind of explanation that goes along with the percentages. You know, it could be just a bullet point, this number is derived from whatever.
So would these then become the starting for our local budget?
Yes, because of the local assessment. Yes, in your local budget. So the CSSU assessment, this drives CSSU budgets in your local budgets. And so the CSSU assessment portion of your budget also comes from this. Okay, so we get to move on?
Just one question. Central Office, are we still on a one-year lease deal with the Town Shopper?
No, we have an easy out, ten-year deal.
Okay.
Easy out. As I remember, the way that was worded, or... Do you know when it started? Maybe last year? I think...
Yeah.
I think it speaks to what we wanted to get at, what we would need to, what that would look like.
Are there questions, comments on the assumptions? You know, it's only a page and a half, but there's a lot of CSU information built into Okay, so 5.0, you know, if another question comes up, and you bring it to your local, I'm sure there'll be the opportunity to get feedback and other questions for... 5.0 reports to the board, 5.0, the central office leadership team report, Elaine?
Well, I'm just going to highlight the calendar 2.0, or next-generation calendar. I heard it referred to as next-generation calendar yesterday. I kind of like that, because I think it encompasses really what this is all about.
It's a lot harder to get that to a headline.
So I will tell you that there's a seven-days article, apparently, that's out today. I've seen the article. I knew I was going to be in it, because I got called how many times? Sandy, like quite a lot. They even called Sandy, wanted to know some personal information, but not of their business. But I'm quoted, I am not quoted, but it says in there that I am, you know, like the enthusiastic force behind this. Here's the thing about that. I am enthusiastic about looking at whatever structures we have in education that we might do better, that will result in better learning for kids. Absolutely. And the other thing about me is, when I believe in something, I tend to be an enthusiastic person about it. I would not say that I am the enthusiastic force. There are other people who have done yeoman's work in this, to really keep focused on, what are the ways that we can make education better? That said, there will be a series of forums in October, one right here at CVU, the purpose of which is to hear from our publics. And to even ask them, so, how would you? If these were the parameters, if the parameters were, we want good student learning, we want engaged learning, all of that, what would a calendar look like? So it kind of dispels some of the myths that are out there around the calendar proposal, and make it very, very clear to everyone, including all of you sitting around the table, this is not a done deal. There are lots of variables here. One variable can be implementation, 2020. One variable could be just an on-off switch, you know? Look at this again, we're just going to stay with the same calendar we have for 150 years and figure out other ways to, you know, move education forward. Another variable is number and length of intercessions. Another variable is start and end date. You know, and it's important to kind of tease all of that out. So these forums will be really important. If people call you, I think it's important for you to say to them, this is not a done deal. And Russ asked me earlier how the decision is made around, about this. And the traditional way, for 150 years, maybe not 150, but at least for the last 20 years, the way the calendar decisions have been made are around the superintendent's table. But there's never been like any big issue like this, so it's always been an up or down vote. And I'll remind you that a few years ago, there was an up or down vote around whether or not Id Alfatur and Yam Kippur would be included as one of the 175 days. And there was mixed feeling about that, and that was an up or down vote. And we decided not to include those days in the 175-day calendar. This is a much, much bigger thing. We would not just have an up or down vote. Obviously, if all of the superintendents sitting around the table don't say, yes, we think that this is worth fighting for, we won't do it. Or we'll do it in a different way. Or we'll figure, you know, after we've listened to the public, we'll figure out something else. But it won't be a few districts doing it one way and a few districts doing it another way, though the statute doesn't even allow for that. Questions about that? I know that it's a...
So how is the decision made in our SU?
You actually give a blessing to a calendar that is determined by the regional superintendent's. That's how the statute is right now. And I'm just saying to you that we're going to be reasonable about this. Right?
Because superintendents have also heard from boards that they don't want calendar changes to drive budgets up.
Right.
For example.
Right, right.
And that's, you know, I've heard that as one concern that's out there. So how do you do it as a net neutral?
So then, this is not an issue that the SU board is even going to vote up or down. This is, you're saying this is a, and I think it's as important that, you know, people understand that, and, you know, if they think that the school boards are going to be voting yea or nay on this, the fact is that no, we're not.
But we can influence the dialogue.
By state law, this is a decision of the superintendent's.
Right.
And that, you know...
So if you look at your own...
We can influence it, perhaps, but ultimately, it's not yea or nay.
Well, we can, absolutely, because we employ Elaine, right? So that's...
So you have influence. That is your influence, exactly. And that's how that works, and that's why then we sit around the table with the 16 other people whose students go to the Essex or Burlington Tech Center. Actually, 14 of us whose students go to those centers and have to reach a decision.
Is the group preparing something that will be in the press after these forums? I mean, personally, I've never had more people talk to me in my life than in the last few weeks. So it'd be great if you guys were ready to roll with something after those are done.
What would prior to, so that people had information going into it?
Well, at the forums, there will be, it's going to be the same structure in all the forums, it will even be the same facilitators at all of the forums. So the... the same facilitators at all of the forums. So the plan is to have, there's one that's here at CVU, have people come and right away engage them in an activity that is like, what are the challenges to this proposed calendar? And do you see any opportunities? And that's kind of a silent activity. Then a presentation of what is and isn't. So, you know, do we lose all of the summer or a couple of weeks, you know, that kind of thing. What does it really look like, what is being presented? What really is on the line for the intercessions? And that could be nothing, or it could be interventions. That's going, that is a school by school, just like it is now. What we do in the summer is not the same, even across our own SU, for interventions for kids. And that will not be any different for interventions that happen, intercessions that happen during the school year. So there'll be a presentation that will be, this is really, this is what we're proposing, this is what it looks like. And then there will be an, an activity at each of the tables for people to have blank calendars and say, you develop a calendar. Help us understand, what would it look like if you developed a calendar? Because maybe somebody's got a bright idea of that that we haven't thought of. While they're doing that, the superintendents, and there'll be multiple superintendents at each of these forums, the superintendents will be reviewing the charts that they've made and figuring out what the themes are that are presenting themselves. You know, probably 90% of that, we could do that now because honestly, I've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls and letters, too.
So Elaine, when you say superintendents are going to be attending each forum as observing, and a facilitator is...
It's an outside facilitator that's going to be doing the facilitation. And so at the end of the evening, we'll be sharing, they'll share out, here are the ideas we had about a calendar, here's what you should be thinking about if you're thinking about calendar, and then we'll share, here are the themes that we've heard. Those themes that we've heard, I would imagine, will end up being an op-ed piece or a, you know, a news article. I'm sure that there will be news people at these forums.
Well, again, there's also the blog. I would encourage people to look at the blog. It's schoolcalendar2.blogspot.com, and it has frequently asked questions, kind of explains the rationale.
Josh?
Just thinking about process down the line a bit and knowing that there may be different options or derivations of this plan, but do you see that the only way to implement a change would be one with uniformity across, let's say, all the Chittenden County Supervisor Unions, or there's not a chance that CSSU may do one thing and...
No.
Chittenden East, another...
We're not allowed to do that. We really have to have the same calendar with all of the districts and supervisor unions whose students attend Essex Tech Center and Burlington Tech Center have to agree on a calendar.
Because of practicality or...
That's so that imagine if you have a kid who goes to the Essex Tech Center who happens to also be a student in Williston, and now you don't have the same vacation calendar.
Right, but could the Essex and the South Burlington Tech Centers have, and the affiliate schools go in different directions?
No, because we all go to these two tech centers. Our kids go to these two tech centers, and kids don't all go to the tech center even full-time, some go half-time. So that is why there is a statute that says the superintendents whose students attend the same tech centers have to agree on a calendar, so that you don't have situations where it's split for families.
So let's take a couple more questions and comments.
I think this is on the worst plan for October, too.
Yeah. Anything else at this point? Lorna?
I think that anything we can do to publicize meetings, I have seen articles.
Every article also has, like, a seven days article head at the bottom.
Yeah, keep pushing that, right, letters, the editors, they, we recommend people show up.
School those letters?
And board members should put it, these on their calendars.
Right.
When is the forum at CVU?
It's the, it's the night after this meeting.
There're going to be hundreds of people, that's what they're expecting, right?
And it might be helpful if a couple board members could attend forums outside the SU.
I'm going to Essex.
Okay. It would really be help, because, because it's moving a huge ship forward in whatever way things transpire, whether...
The forums are at St. Albans, Burlington, Chittenden, Essex, and CVU. They're intended to be regional, not by population.
So I imagine if you haven't been getting feedback from your community on this, you certainly will. There's been a lot of activity on, like, Front Porch Forum and so forth, so... Okay, so let's move on if we can. 5.2, the fourth quarter financial management report. Who's taking that?
Me. Oh, thank you.
Mike, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Including your board package of fourth quarter FMR, we finished 39,000 better than budget. The largest variance we had was in transportation, both parts and fuel. Parts and repairs and fuel.
And there's narrative that was in your packet plus some numbers. Does anyone have questions for Mike?
Only that...
Yes, Jean.
I did, Mike. So let's see, Access ended up in the black by $8,000. Does that include the $19,000 at CVU?
That is thanks to a very generous donation by CVU of $19,000. They're able to finish in the black a little bit. Thank you, CVU.
So they would be $11,000 in the red if we hadn't done that.
Correct.
That's really not good. I thought we were, I really thought that we had them on track to be break even. This is problematic in oh-so-many ways.
So you mentioned the number 19. Is it, are we going to see the number 19 here?
Nope.
Okay.
It's just that you'll see the 8,000 here.
Right.
So, did you want to just explain the 19 for those who are interested?
Oh, just at the, you know, the end of June, CVU chose to, you know, understanding that Access had a $32,000 deficit that we would go a long way to trying to correct that to get them, because we thought they were working hard, they'd corrected the ship, you know, everything was good, we're just going to get their deficit significantly reduced and get them right to go. But, so we voted a $19,000, 16? Yeah, it was half, right, 16. 16 to Access to cut that deficit in half, and unfortunately...
So was it 32 coming into the year, and by your contribution, it's now down to 24?
22.
Or is it still 32 as of the end of the year?
Yeah, I'm curious about how this is.
It's 24 after the year closed down, 24 deficit.
But it would have been 40, were it not for CVU kicking in, having run favorable for the year and having some access loans to...
So, I assume that Bob is working on how to fix this going forward. I don't think he...
He does meet with them monthly about this issue.
Yeah, but this is a...
Yep.
Other questions for Mike, or anything you wanted to highlight, Mike? Thank you, Mike. Okay, 6.0, discussion matters, and we have 6.1, policy work plan review. Cindy sent a memo that had a work plan. Did anything you wanted to highlight there?
No, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions for Cindy on this?
You'd mentioned that we were flipping around because there was some controversy over something, or people weren't asking questions?
Uh, we had a number of requests related to the G section of the, of the book, and rather than do, like, two-thirds of them and leave a third more naturally in the cycle, figured we'd just do G.
Or H?
Or H, sorry.
School community relations.
I'm cold meds. The H section is correct. It's a nice, small section, so. And it has come up a lot, use of facilities and visits by parents and visits by media, so we figured it was just timely to do them all together. And since students is such a long thing, it's not a bad thing. We try and do that more cohesively.
Anything else for Cindy? Okay, thank you, Cindy. 7.0, we have some action matters. 7.1, need a motion to approve the 2013-2014 Board Work Plan. We'll have a motion, a second, and then quick discussion on this in a second, okay? Elaine has put in the packet a draft work plan for us to take a look at, and Elaine, you want to explain this format?
What I can say about this is that I put this together looking back at retreat notes. So I go over the retreat notes, I go over my notes from last year's board meetings, I look at prior years, and then put something together. This looks a little different than how you've seen it before, and that's partly because I was doing this for myself, and as I was having conversations with people, realized it was so much easier to see and understand where everything was flowing and going. So proposing that this is what the work plan looks like for the future.
And just a reminder, if there are blank spaces, blank cells, it doesn't mean that nothing happens in those weeks. For example, you'll see December, January, that those reduced, the cells are empty, but we're all deep in our budgets at that point.
The cells could have budget meetings in there. In fact, I thought we were going to do that. I meant to do that.
And then you'll see the common topic. If anyone wants to influence common topic in any way that, you know, strongly, this is really a good time, but these really are driven by our requests as board members and needs of the administration of things that they need to work on. So that's where those evolved from.
These came exactly from the list that you guys generated at the June retreat.
Okay, anything else on the work plan? Okay, all those in favor of approving the 2013-2014 Board Work Plan, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you, motion carries. 7.2, need a motion to approve budget assumptions in the budget calendar. In a second. We had discussion about this already. Are you ready for a vote?
Yes.
All those in favor of approving the budget assumptions and budget calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Opposed.
And abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. 7.3, need a motion to approve the substitute daily rate increase, changing it from 80 to 85 effective October 1, 2013, and increasing it to $90 effective July 1, 2014. Is there a second?
Okay.
Discussion? Russ?
So looking at the attachment here with what other supervisory unions and other school districts are paying in Chittenden County, frankly, I don't see where we're not competitive.
Cindy, did you want to address this in particular?
It depends on which school you're talking about. Charlotte and Shelburne wouldn't have the same competition as, say, CVU has with Chittenden East, or Williston is having with Chittenden Central.
I mean, is that a matter of distance?
Yeah, that's part of it. What my, what the principals are reporting to us is that people are saying, no, we're going to take work here because they're paying us more per day.
And are they having difficulty actually though filling those slots? I mean, if people are saying no, but do they have others that are willing to accept it at that rate?
On heavy days, when we need a lot of subs, they are having a lot of trouble. On the days we need two or three, no.
And so if this is a CVU and Williston issue and not a Shelburne and Charlotte, again, for geography reasons or whatever other reasons, then is that, you know, should that be a local issue as opposed to one that we're voting on across the SU and raising that rate all across the SU?
By board policy, the SU board sets the sub rate, and from an administrative standpoint, it's certainly simpler to have one rate and not have to stop and think about which district the person subbed in that day, because they work in multiple districts, the same people.
And then do we have an estimate of, you know, what this might cost for the, you know, I assume we're talking about for the coming fiscal year where we already have set budgets. Do we have an estimate of what this may run? Is this a, you know, $10,000 item across, you know, all the school districts? Is this a $100,000 item across all the school districts?
It was...
And would, I'm sorry, would this be to go into, I'm a little off on my dates, would this be to go into effect immediately, or is this to go into effect? When, October 1?
Is the proposal...
And it would be built into the assumptions. The, it depends on the district, but it's about a 7% increase on average on that line of the budget is our estimate. We don't know the actuals. Last year's numbers are higher. Charlotte, I think, actually, a discussion about this. Because of the amount of professional development that happened around the best practices in math, there were more subs used, so we were trying, we had a hard time separating out the normal illness type of absences versus where we were pulling teachers out of the classroom, but we're guestimating a 7 to 7.5% in that line.
I guess still, though, I would like to know for Shelburne, that we anticipate this being, you know, 2 grand or 20 grand, you know, is it bog dust, or is it's, you know, a really, you know, an appreciable number that means it's going to have to come from somewhere else?
It's about 20,000 for Shelburne, anticipated.
And could you provide that for Williston as well?
Charlotte is about 10, CVU's about 11, Heinsburg's 13, Shelburne's 24, 23, 24, and Williston is 21. And Shelburne's maybe high because we think they had the largest group of math last year.
For 20, this is for fiscal year 2015?
No, that's for the balance of this year.
That would be, and that was, would they, that was based on a two or three-year average of what you spent on subs and using the increase. It's a very simple formula.
Josh?
Is there a compelling reason why we need to make a decision for two different years? I mean, it seems to lock in for this coming year is one thing, but to ask us to do it prospectively for next year?
We are asking for next, some of the principals wanted to go to 90 today. Some of them would like to actually go to 100. The reason would be that so that we're building it into your budget for next year. The board could certainly say no to this year and say 85 for next year, and that's what we would do, or they could say 90 for next year, however you wanted to do it. That was, that was the, of the four options I gave the principals to vote on, that was the most popular, to do $5 this year, $5 next year.
What I'm hearing is concern about budgets for this current fiscal year right now.
Yeah.
Adora, and then?
I don't hear any mention of differentiated rates.
Licensed and unlicensed, like the other districts have.
Licensed are already, they only get the licensed rate if they're using their teaching license, so they're coming as a long-term sub, which is usually an assignment of 15 or more days. Sometimes it's shorter, and we do pay their, their actual per diem rate on the current teacher salary schedule. And we're not finding that we're not competitive in doing that. It's really the daily subs that we feel are not competitive in, or we're losing ground. And that's why the recommendation's limited to daily.
Eric, and then Josh?
So, just to follow, you said it's, it is or has been policy to have just one rate across the district, or across the SU, rather?
Correct.
Can that be changed? Is it...
It used to be significantly different across the supervisory union, and that became problematic. So, you know, Heinsburg was paying, what, a substitute $60, and Charlotte was paying a substitute $80. Charlotte, Heinsburg might have a hard time recruiting.
Right, then they could change. In other words, rather than throw it all forward where they have to be...
Well, the... A policy can be changed as long as we go through the policy warning discussion process.
Yes. And then just a last question, just to follow on Russ's because it wasn't clear from the answer. Is this, just to clarify your answer to Russ, are we not able to fill, or is just a few extra phone calls that it takes to fill the spots?
It depends on the time of year and the, and the availability in general. So if there's a big professional development thing going on across the SU and 20 to 30 teachers are being pulled, it's, it would be difficult no matter what our rate is, but it's made more complicated when they can go some, when the preferred subs can go somewhere else. The beginning of the year, when most teachers are here, because professional development hasn't started, people haven't started getting sick, except for me, the attendance is up and we're not calling as many subs.
Is it possible just to have a base rate of whatever it is we have now and just the... the ability to have, you know, whatever, ten dollar extra rate during a busy time period or something like that?
It would be a payroll nightmare. I mean, we can accommodate whatever the board wants to set up.
But right now, this is going to cost a total, total sixty grand or something like that in one year?
Well, I think, I think one of the things that I'm, I'm hearing, and board members, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm, I'm hearing a reluctance to perhaps have a vote tonight, and I might suggest that we get more information before we put this to vote. And Josh, and then Russ, because I, you know, it, we're slicing and dicing something that we don't really know, and that will be problematic.
It'll be more problematic if I don't know what to do for next year, because that's happening in the next two weeks. If the board wants to wait till November one, December one, January one, whatever, to adjust this year, or not adjust it at all, that's fine.
Well, it, it could be that...
We already approved the budget.
You did.
So we know it's going in the budget assumptions for next year, so that's done.
Yeah.
It's just a matter of what we actually want to do.
Right, right. So we could revisit this as a vote in October, and that we would still be in a place to have things in place for next year, and perhaps an adjustment for this year. Josh, did you?
That would be my strong preference. I feel the need to really confer with my local board about this issue. I know there are other budget adjustments that are on our agenda, and twenty thousand dollars is not so insignificant for us.
I know, every board is feeling squeezed right now.
So... I just...
Russ?
Yeah, I certainly would be in favor of voting on it next month, and what I would like to understand, you know, we're not even through the first quarter of this fiscal year, you know, if we were into the third quarter, and I knew we were running a, you know, a positive variance, it might be, okay, you know, that's fine, but at this point, I think we need to understand where the twenty grand's coming from. That, you know, where are the principals in the Shelburne building looking at getting this, this twenty-odd grand that, that they're going to most likely have to come up with, and I would assume that the other boards would, would like to see that information too.
So just to move things forward, I'm hearing that we'll just, we'll need some more information related to impact of dollars, perhaps something related to the competitive nature of the substitute pool, and, you know, not every substitute is alike, the next substitute, there are a lot of differences, and so we need to perhaps have some understanding of that.
Yeah, a high school grad versus, you know, a former teacher. It'd be good to know what we're sacrificing by not paying more.
Right.
So that's a good question.
And it's, you know, you, when you, teachers are out of the classroom doing professional development, you want a quality person in that classroom helping to move things forward, and the more that those relationships can be stable with kids, the more that we can continue to move things forward.
So to Kristen's point, just to mention, so Kristen, your point is, it's not so much whether or not you can get a sub or not. The question is, are you getting a high school kid because the license book?
You're getting someone who's just standing there babysitting versus teaching your kids.
Right, you want competent, capable people there.
So do you need to motion table?
A motion to postpone, we'll just do that formally.
So move.
In a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Seven point three, I'm sorry, seven point four, need a motion to approve entering into V-HI member participation agreement in power of attorney. In a second?
Second.
Discussion. I had sent an email this afternoon just to make sure that you had the documents, but, you know, you may not have had a chance to, to read them, but Cindy, did you want to speak to the V-HI piece?
This is required under the changes to healthcare reform. V-HI had to, for lack of a better word, be organized to continue in its grandfathered status, and in order to continue participating, and I'm missing the date here, beyond next, this year, we need to adopt this agreement. If the board adopts the agreement tonight, they'll be able to vote on the board composition and participate in the first meeting. If they don't, we do have until May thirty-first of two thousand fourteen to agree to it. We just won't be able to be members of the board or vote on the board composition.
And so...
We being you, not me.
Yeah, and that would be the, at the VSBA annual meeting, the V-HI group meets then.
And what's not in here is Vasbo, Vermont Association of School Business Officials, which Mike, Bob, and I sit on, have discussed this. It's the same agreement across the state. There are many business managers that aren't excited about it, but we all feel like there's not a lot of choice at the moment.
Discussion, comments, questions? You ready for a vote? Okay, all those in favor of approving entering into the V-HI member participation agreement in power of attorney, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Seven point five, need a motion to award a bid for auditor services, and the recommendation is to Father Gill Segalian Valley.
Say that again.
Jean knows, I love saying that many times. Father Gill Segalian Valley, in the amount of two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. And that was for multiple years, that's...
Four years.
Four years. Thank you. So need a motion, and then in a second, and then we'll discuss it. Is there a motion? In a second?
You shorted him a hundred bucks.
Pardon me?
Two thirty-one, one hundred.
Oh, thank you, Keith, very much. And Mike, did you have anything related to this?
This is the firm that we currently utilize, so we have experience with the firm. They're happy with our services. They challenge me each year in a different way, and that's all I can say.
Since Lynn's not here, I got to say...
I know.
...uncomfortable using the exact same audit firm over and over and over, but I've been on this board for ten years, I've made that comment every year, and Bob convinces me every year that it's the right thing to do, so.
You know, I've heard the discussion a lot of times, that they do a great job, but maybe it's worth having someone else look who's going to look at things in a different way. I mean, I'm not a money person, but if someone new is looking at it, maybe they find something that is to our benefit. Can we do a one-year with somebody else? Do we have to lock into somebody for four years?
When I wrote the RFP, I wrote it for four years. It currently was three years. It seemed like we're just turning around and doing it again, so I extended it one more year to a four-year RFP.
And the, you know, some of the rationale that's come to us before has been related to the audits that they go through as an auditing firm as well.
They go through a period review.
I mean, they seem great. I've sat in on audits, and I don't know money, but it just...
I kind of feel like I have to trust Bob on this one. I don't...
Well, I, you know, I was going to raise the same point that you had, Jean, you know, for an extra ten grand over the life of the, of the contract, and perhaps it even, you know, they would agree to do it for three instead of four if we, you know, if we revise the RFP or ask them to. You know, what's the downside to using RF, RHR Smith, other than the fact that they're from Maine instead of Vermont? You know, is there something that, you know, we have some degree of fiduciary obligation as members of the board, you know, should we really be looking at that and saying, you know what, it's time for a change, and we'll come back to Father Gill? And I suspect if you ask them, they would say, yeah, you know, as much as we wouldn't want to lose the business, it's not a bad decision on our part to, you know, to change auditors periodically. And, you know, that's why, you know, that's why they bid on it, because they hope that somebody else makes that, that decision.
Right, I think it's a board decision. I've been through changes in auditors. Normally, the first year, they had to develop their materials, understand our systems, and really document what we do. So the first year's always difficult for a new firm coming in, both for the staff at the SU and for the audit firm. After that, they have their history.
There's a learning curve, no question about it.
And difficult isn't always bad, because it probably allows you that opportunity to relook at things again, too. If you've got to re-explain to somebody how you do things, it helps you to reformulate in your mind, is this really the way we want to do things, or should we do things differently or whatever? I, I would agree that it might be good to look at somebody new.
Is this, is there any difficulty with postponing this decision for a month?
No. So that Bob can give us this impassionately in person?
Yeah, you know, I just think that we're not, I, I don't feel that we have the collective knowledge in the room to, you know, make assumptions about what's going on, and would rather give Bob a chance to speak to it before we declined the recommendation.
And perhaps part of that is, you know, more feedback on what that transition means to the time of our staff, you know, what that looks like. But I guess, you know, short of an impassionately by Bob that leans me over, I'm inclined to, you know, vote against Father Gill, nothing personal, and to, you know, let RHR Smith give it a crack for three or four years.
And I would also need to better understand the RFP process, how that comes into play, because we did have requests for proposals that went out, and then for us to change midstream, we'd have to probably put another RFP out.
If we were to stay with the four years, I'll have to check the dates on the proposals that came in. In other words, they're usually good for thirty or forty-five days. I don't have those with me tonight to verify.
Oh, that's your point was, is that if we went with somebody new, maybe you don't want to commit to four years.
Right.
You know, maybe you only want a one year, which means we're...
Exactly. Lauren?
I'm a little uncomfortable about someone from Maine, and I don't know to what extent, I mean, just because it's a different state. Well, Buxton, Maine, I mean, you know, it's a problem. So I don't know to what extent that, that causes even a greater learning curve for them to come in when they don't know the state and what's required here, how things are done.
David?
I think we should table it and postpone it to my turn. Talk to us, but I'm, I'm curious as to why this concern is being raised when we've had no difficulties with the audits, and we've been pleased with the, the advice they've been giving us in terms of what we need to do better. So I...
I think we've seen a number of instances around the state of financial malfeasance where books are being audited, yet somebody is still successfully stealing money. Not that I think any of that's going on here, but I just think that it is a smart fiduciary decision on our part to periodically change that up.
So well, because Bob's not in the room, and I know that he would probably prefer to speak to this, I think it does make sense for us to postpone it, and Mike, you can help Bob understand our concerns, and the two of you can work on that. We'll stay with Mike. So motion to postpone seven point five, awarding the...
So moved.
Okay, in a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're going to revisit seven point three and seven point five in October. Eight point oh, we have a consent agenda, motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
So move it.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Then we're at nine point oh, our next meeting dates, you can read that. Cindy, we're a little bit behind, so we're, our common topic, we wanted, as board members, we had requested negotiations of one oh one. Help, help us solve, walk through what the process is, roles and responsibilities. One thing we will not discuss in public forum would, of course, be positions and so forth. We're focusing on process. So Cindy, whenever you're ready, this is your show. And just a reminder, we are going to move into executive session briefly, prior before you're going to your local meetings.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we have them.
I can go to talk to them.
Okay, we'll go next door for that. So our, our goal is to end our meetings, we're going to have executive session every, every CSSU board meeting before you move into your local boards. Throughout this year, we're going to have an executive session that lasts ten, fifteen minutes, just to give us a chance to catch up on whatever we need to related to negotiations, just so other board members feel included. Thank you, Cindy.
So Murphy, as well, of course, I have a cold, so if I'm either speaking too quickly, not loud enough, or you just can't understand what I'm saying, please let me go. As soon as this comes up, we've got, I have a copy of the presentation and then the background materials. My intention is not to go over all the materials in there, those are for your reference, either because you can't sleep, or because you're just dying to know more after listening to me speak for those fifteen to twenty minutes. If my colleagues apply through this briefly, to give you guys a, a whole opportunity to ask questions, there are members from the board and the associate negotiating teams here tonight, who need some questions, they graciously agree to come tonight as well. So what I'm going to cover tonight is what are, what are negotiations, what are the components, and then there are going to be questions about some of the hot topics.
Cindy, I'm sorry, could you introduce whoever you, someone to help us with the...
Oh, sure. Karina, do you want to start?
I'm Karina Hesse, I'm the CSA president.
I am Kristen Rathman, I'm on the negotiations team from Charlotte Central, and I came really for my own information, but you know...
I just assumed Lisa was that good at getting...
Yeah. She's not here.
I did as well, my name is Bob Gurewitz, and I'm from Shelburne.
And hot topics are, doesn't mean that they're hot button issues so much as some of you just wanted to understand how a salary schedule works, a little bit more about agency fee slash fair share, and healthcare reform, and one other thing that'll be in here when I get to it. So just thought it'd be useful to start with the definition of negotiations. It's a mutual discussion and arrangement of terms, of a transaction or agreement. So all it is, is a meeting of two groups trying to reach an agreement on something. It's not a demand, it's not a, we'll get everything we want, and there's a, there's a loser. We try to have collaborative negotiations, we're, at least at the end of it, we're all happy and livid and, you know, no one ever feels like they won completely, and hopefully nobody ever feels like they lost completely. In your packet, there's a summary from the Vermont School Boards Association. It starts here, and then on the back of that, there's a table that just kind of outlines the statutes that we have in this state regarding collective bargaining. So basically, the process for both the teachers and the support staff are governed by statute. So nobody's making this up, we do have some process we need to follow. I've also included in the policy, on the policy, board policy on board member conflict of interest. Sometimes board members feel on their own they have a conflict because they have someone who, in the family, who works for another district or are own. We've left that up to individual boards and board members to come across, so I just included that in case it comes up for you or a member of your board or in the community in general. I don't think we currently have any boards, board members who have loved ones or significant others working as teachers or support staff at the moment, so, but it has come up in the past. Bargaining in good faith. So you'll hear that thrown around a lot. It's a term that ultimately gets defined by case law. It's, what it means is that once you give the board team, or once the association gives its team the authority to go forward and negotiate, they have to try and reach an agreement in good faith. We couldn't come to the table and say, sure, we can give you twelve percent increases the first year of the contract, knowing that it's unlikely your board members are going to ratify such an agreement, nor would the association likely come forward with a, oh, sure, we'll take a five percent cut in pay, because it's highly unlikely that their members are going to ratify that. And that's an overly simplistic example, but it means that you're putting your best efforts forward, you're being honest in your representation of what you believe you can get your board members or your association members to ratify at the end of the process. Ground rules, we've talked a lot about that in our strategy meetings, but I just want to go over that a little bit publicly, what that means. The ground rules are basically the norms for the group. How are we going to do negotiations? What are we agreeing to hold each other accountable for? It can be as simplistic as the length of the meeting, to guidelines around confidentiality, and when information will be shared. It can also cover, we, we don't get this mundane, but who's going to pay for dinner? We split the costs. We split the costs, in case you're wondering. Or we alternate, or we provide our own, it just depends on the night. Confidentiality, in this context, and Colleen talked about it a little bit at the opening, is the purpose for this topic and presentation is to kind of outline the process. If you have questions about strategy, board positioning, and the proposals we're going to be made, that's going to happen during the executive sessions that we've held already and will hold going forward, and they're not part of the public discussion. That doesn't mean you can't get input from the public, it doesn't mean that the public isn't going to give you input, and it will come from a variety of sources at different times in the process. But we also try and set up in our ground rules when that confidentiality will go away, if it will go away. And we've talked about a little bit how those might change going forward, but traditionally, it's become, it's when we go to impasse. An impasse means, and I'll get into that when we go into the specifics, but that's the point in the process where the parties, or at least one party decides, we're not going to reach agreement without the help of somebody else. And then traditionally, that triggers proposals no longer being confidential. Any questions about this part before I move on? So the key to successful negotiations, the work that your subcommittee that you authorized to work on, both before we formally put it into the one-year rollover contract and then in the one-year rollover contract, has really done a lot to improve communication between the parties and to lead into the discussions we've been having around the ground rules. I'm very hopeful, I think members of both teams are very hopeful that it's going to make for a better process unfold. I don't know that it means the parties will agree on everything better, but I think it'll at least feel better and that there may be more voices at the table than there's been in the past. The other big part is preparation. You guys have put a lot of work already into negotiations this year, that is really unusual. Usually, it's pick your team, and then the team goes off and does the work, and somewhere between six and eighteen months later, they kind of let you know what happened. You've also done that in your goal setting, we've started talking about what some goals may be in this session we had on August twenty-sixth, and again, in your budget assumption discussions around how much money you may be considering. And we talked about the role of comparables in that discussion. And if you don't know, and weren't at the August twenty-sixth meeting, comparables are where other schools typically in Chittany County have settled at in terms of financial issues, length of contract year, length of school day, those other combinations of things that we compare ourselves against, where a fact-finding or an independent person may come in and say, that proposal doesn't make sense in light of the comparables. And that proposal could be anything and from either side. They're going to tend to look at what are other schools doing. We've also done a lot of work around communications that will hopefully make the process better for everybody. One, just by setting up the executive sessions immediately following all SU board meetings this coming school year, the end of last year, and making sure all thirty-four board members feel invited to that process. But also, we've talked about communications between the teams, communications with the community in general, board member to board member communications, and also trying to perhaps change the model where we've had one spokesperson on each team talking at the sessions, and that's it. We've done a lot of work about, trying to make sure all voices are heard at the table, and whether that'll be realized or not is yet to be seen, but I know that's a goal, or I think it's a goal for everybody in the group. I've also included a summary from Vermont School Boards Association in your packet, the essential work of bargaining pocket guide. That was, I think, originally provided to you this spring, so you should have a nice color copy, but if you misplaced that, I did the black and white version for you in the packet. So the other big component of negotiations is relationships, and so I started to kind of brainstorm all the different relationships that are impacted in negotiations. And the way I kind of put it to myself is, you have short-term relationships, like, you have short-term relationships, like when you're going to buy a car. You really don't care, you're probably not going to see the person for three to five years, so you can be all as hard as you want about it, because you know you can go down to the dealer down the street, or you can go across the state or wherever you want to go. The complication in a school district is these are line-term relationships, and they're the kids, the students that work with you and your teachers every day, you don't want them impacted, you don't want your principals impacted too much because they're dealing day-to-day with the teachers, so this decision, the decision made by this SU to keep negotiations at the board and central office administration level. Roll into that my job and Elaine's job to also maintain healthy relationships with all of our employees, and so we even have another level of separation there at times, but we also know we're the ones responsible for supporting the board. But then you start to look at that list, and you've got your general relationship between the board and the association, board negotiating team, board member, board administration, board council, board team, there's, and there's probably more than I put on there. So this is a complicated process by nature, so I think some of the components we talked about before, clarity around communications, being as honest and upfront with the information we can at the time, with people being as transparent as this process allows us to be, but also maintaining the integrity of the process, and it's a, it's a fine line. You guys had that heated discussion several times during the spring about open negotiations versus closed negotiations versus something in between, and it's all about, in my mind, maintaining those relationships. It's a lot easier when we have positive relationships, which ninety-nine percent of the time, this SU enjoys. We're able to solve problems before they become a grievance, we're able to be creative together, and it doesn't feel like I'm imposing the will of the board on the association because we've done the work together. There are other schools and communities in Chittany County and across the state where I don't think they can say that, so I think you should be proud of that, but we also need to be mindful of maintaining that as well, because it only takes, as you all know, one round of negotiations to change everything. The other thing to be aware of are the roles and responsibilities. I have purposely separated out chief negotiators and board council. That's been an ongoing discussion for this group, and again, without getting into strategy, these are the different roles. A chief negotiator can be anybody. It can be me, I've been the chief negotiator. It could be a board member, in the past, you've used Scott Cameron. It just depends on the goals and the intent, and quite frankly, sometimes the workload and what's going on, both in terms of my availability, board member capacity, and also the capacity of our board council. So I've separated that out because it can be different roles. Your chief negotiator tends to be the person who conveys the proposals, that speaks on behalf of the group. Currently, for the association, that's Lisa Bisby, in the past, it's been Scott Cameron for us, and that's both in terms of support staff and the teachers. Board council can serve in a separate role without being negotiation, the chief negotiator, and simply available to advise the board on proposals. So if there was a proposal perchance about healthcare reform, probably not something that you want to agree to at the table with no input from somebody who's not an expert, and that would go on both sides. So you're going to want to send it to somebody that may not even be a current board council, it may be somebody else, and I assume that Vermont NEA, they have, and I'm sure Mark Hage is the person, who would weigh anything we do around those kind of proposals. So it could be, even if we had Scott Cameron serving as chief negotiator, we still may pick somebody else to advise the board, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an attorney. It could be an accountant running a model because we decide to completely redo the salary schedule, and we need to do some kind of matrix based on the number of years somebody has until retirement, equal their compensation times CPI, something I'm not going to do. I can handle the current salary schedule, much to Mike's amusement at times, and Mike can help you when it gets a little complex, but when you're getting into something where we're using actuaries, you're going to want an actuary doing the work. The superintendent has a role in advising the board about what's going on to help support the vision of the school and what needs to change in the contract in order to achieve that, and that's where she gets input from all the administration. I have a role in helping understand how that would be implemented, or how complicated it might be to implement a change, and to also share with you what had the grievances or sticky situations been in the last three to ten years where we might want to change the language. Board team members have a big role. They're trying to represent both their board and their community, and the SU board and everybody else that's giving them input, and we spent a lot of time, I think this year, talking about what that role needs to be vis-à-vis their board members back at the ranch, so to speak, and helping everyone feel like they're still part of the process, while also building trust that the board team can represent the wishes of the team. Association team members have the same challenge board team members do, and if you look at it, in some ways, they have a harder responsibility. They have four hundred individual employees who all have four hundred different opinions on a daily basis, sometimes changing, and for them, it's really personal, because you're talking about their job. And I'm not saying it's not personal for all of you because you care about your schools, but it is a slightly different dynamic. And then you have your general board members and keeping them informed and feeling they're in the loop and part of the process, and not just being told, as I think some of you felt at the end, it's make-a-choice time, and feeling like you didn't even know you had little choices along the way. Hopefully, that won't be the feeling this time. The general teacher population, same thing. It's not a board responsibility per se to keep the teachers informed, that's the role of the association, much like it's our role to keep board members informed, but I understand that there's a complexity there because they're your neighbors, they're asking you questions, they want to know what's going on, so it's a delicate balance. And then the community, a lot of times, the teachers are our community, a lot of times, they're your next-door neighbor, and then you have the general population who don't work in the school, who may or may not have students in the school, who are concerned about budgets and concerned about what teachers are compensated or support staff are compensated at versus their own personal experiences, and we're all trying to balance all of that. So tremendous responsibilities on all of these people, and then the community increasingly taking on and wondering what their role is in negotiations. I don't know how many of you are familiar with it, and I'm going to get it wrong, but I think either Massachusetts or New Hampshire, the community votes on the contract, and I actually started getting calls last time around from community members wanting to know why Vermont doesn't do that. Luckily, it's very easy for me to say, because that's not the law in Vermont, and then they want to know how do they change the law in Vermont. I said, well, it's not me, but I said, hey, you go to your representative. So it's a complex area, it's a hot-button topic, and the community members are in the same place, they love their schools, they love the experiences, most of them have chosen our communities because they want their students to go through the Chittneys South Schools, but at the same time, they're dealing with the financial realities everybody else is. So the formal steps are, the first thing is by October fifteenth, the association has to let me know they intend to negotiate. This is actually on my list of things that I think we could probably presume they intend to negotiate, we probably should just change that to tell me if you're not going to negotiate this year. Set ground rules, good-faith bargaining negotiation, which is the exchanging of proposals, actually negotiating and hopefully reaching tentative agreements. The next four steps are only if necessary, so you can go from good-faith bargaining right to settlement, and of course, that's always the goal. But in between there, there's declaring of impasse, saying, we can't do this on our own, we're not going to agree, we just need to agree not to agree. Mediation is when a third party comes in and helps the two parties hopefully reach a settlement. That doesn't work, you've got a fact-finding or an independent third party who may also have been the mediator, looks at the proposals, looks at comparables, and says, this is where the settlement should be. And then finality, thankfully, this SU hasn't reached this step in a number of years, but this is where either the teachers can vote to strike, or the board can vote to impose a contract. So quickly, the hot topics, agency fair share. During the two thousand thirteen legislative session, a law was passed saying that all teachers and all union support staff members will have to start paying up their share to the association. The percentages still being worked at, we'll know that by January, what that amount is, I believe, that's last communication from Vermont NEA. It is still something that the employee has to sign and direct us to deduct from their paycheck. So we haven't universally said, okay, all employees have to pay at least this amount. We still have to get that information from the association. There's no responsibility on the board or the administration to collect that money until we're notified that a deduction has been authorized. Okay, that's been a question from many areas. It's not a board responsibility, it's an association responsibility, and if somebody's refusing to do that, they'll have their own process for dealing with it. It's not on the employer to figure it out. Salary schedules. I know you can't read this, which is why the last page of your packet is salary schedule. Here in simple, in this SU, which is unlike many school districts in the state of Vermont, steps do not equal years of experience, okay? So rude awakening for many new hires, especially the last few years, moving off half an eye possibly, these steps, yeah, you've got seven years of experience, yep, welcome to Chittney South. And many people experienced that as SU teachers when we compressed the schedule almost ten years ago, so. Basically, what happens is I get somebody's transcript and their resume, and I calculate how many credits they have. The columns represent a bachelor's degree plus graduate credits. In this SU, a master's is equal thirty graduate credits, also not universal, that varies by school district. You are on one salary schedule for the SU. That happened when we consolidated almost ten years ago, so that's a big jump. So if you are just graduating from UVM with your bachelor's degree, with no experience, this year you're making forty thousand seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Assuming during the next fifteen years of your career, you continue to take credits, get into sixty graduate credits, whichever fifteen years is almost due, you could be making eighty-four thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars in this year's schedule. Obviously, it will hopefully increase over the fifteen years somebody is at the SGA, but basically, it's double the starting teacher for the end of the schedule, okay? Somebody with eleven years' experience and a master's is going to be fifty-seven eight fifty-eight. So that's how a salary schedule works. In terms of when we talk about step movement, all that means is that if you're here this year, and you come back next year, you will go to the next step. So if you are on step seven, you'll be on step eight, until you reach a cap. So in the first two columns, after you get to step ten, if you don't take more educational credits, you will not move up. You'll be stacked on this step until you take additional educational credits. Likewise, once you get here at the bottom, and don't look at this bottom, bottom, look at eighty-one, you're supposed to have that, that's the most you can make, minus the. A student who has nineteen years' experience, that's where you will sit, until we either extend the salary schedule, or you'll most likely sit there. So after fifteen years from the system, you will essentially be frozen at the top of your column. The bottom thing that I referenced incorrectly, the eighty-four thousand, that is a special post-up that predates me. It's in the contract if you want to read more information, but we have about, I want to say twenty-five teachers who are on that step, and as they retire, that stuff will go away unless something else is negotiated. Workday, work year, you've heard a lot about this, and you'll continue to hear about it. It goes towards flexibility in our workday.
This is really important, this salary thing. And this is just one thing that I try to keep in mind, is that the salary increase between the steps is the same, so it's the same amount of money between one and two as it is between, well, I don't know, there's a little bit, there's a subtle point of difference there, but really, if you get a five hundred dollar raise between your first and second year, you're only getting a five hundred dollar raise between your twelfth and thirteenth year, the percentage is a lot smaller for an experienced teacher.
Correct, especially if you get, as you get towards the caps, you get. So when we talk about new money, so we'll say we settled for three percent new money, that in itself gets divided as the cost to implement step movements. and the increase to the base. So if you increase the base 2%,
So we say increase the base, you're talking about that first step going up. And the two columns are multiples of that number.
Correct, thank you. So this column here with the decimals versus the dollars, that's the index of the salary schedule. So going down, it goes up by .05 until you get to step 10, which starts to go by .06, and it's .06 going across. So it's a 5 by 6, 6 by 6 index.
So I just kind of think of it as simplistically, as a three-dimensional, right? You could just stick with this always, and all the new money would just go to people staying longer and getting more education. But we also often go in the other direction and increase the base. The first, if you increase the first step, everybody gets a little bit.
So in the last settlement, we froze steps. In the second year of the settlement, everybody got a 3% increase because the people at the top were getting like 1 point something percent, whereas the people at the bottom were getting like 5.0. So, and there's been various strategies around that over the years.
It's just, people say the 4% or 3% new money, not everybody's getting a 3% raise.
Right, exactly. It's not, new money does not equal the percent increase somebody actually got. Okay, any questions about the salary schedule before I move on?
Everybody understands it.
The point is, I understand it, and I'm going to appreciate it. But, you know, certainly stop me if you ever have questions or call. Workday, work year, you've heard a lot about this. Currently, we're at 189 contract years, contract days. That'd be funny. The people that have been here much longer than I have will understand how you got to 189 days, and yes, you paid for that. And currently, the day is defined by 15 minutes. Let me take that back. Teachers are required to be on-site, 15 minutes before students arrive and 15 minutes after they're dismissed. Our teachers are obviously here more than that. But that's the contractual obligation. Healthcare reform, and I'm really thankful that I don't have a lot of time to talk about this. Currently, we're in grandfather plans. VI is currently specifically referenced in the contract. It is a board common topic in November, so you'll get a chance to ask somebody lots of questions about that, and I found out that it was added. And BSB regional meeting next week is all about this. So if you're not registered, I would again encourage you all to go. And that's all I've got, unless you have questions for me, or if one of the association wants to add anything.
And if we could take, you know, five minutes, we're squeezing our time if we want to get our executive session in, but just try to keep our purity at five minutes. And I'll let you call on people.
Okay, I just have a quick question. So when we talk about salary, how do we compare across state?
State, yeah. In Chittenden County, we go between third and fourth, generally speaking. Depends what point on the salary schedule you pick. But we're considered one of the top. Usually, the very top is South Burlington and sometimes Chittenden Central, depending on where they are in the negotiation cycles. Burlington just settled an agreement that puts them smack dab at the middle. I haven't read the language to understand how that works. And then traditionally, Milton, Winewski, and originally Burlington were at the bottom. But we moved, sometimes we drop as low as five, depending. But we're still gathering all that data. Currently, I want to say five SUs and school districts are negotiating this year. And there's only one school that's settled out for more than two years beyond next year, I think. And I'll have that data for you in executive session. Thank you. You're welcome. Any other questions?
And how does Vermont compare to other states?
I don't know that off the top of my head. But Chittenden County tends to be highest in the state. And when I came here, top teachers made 15,000 to 20,000 more than Washington County where I came from and Monroe County.
Last time I looked on a national level, we are just, yeah, in the middle of the country. We're small, 25th out of 30.
Anyone else? Anyone want to add anything, not just questions?
Cindy, how does it work when we talk about, I mean, all we really talk about is the board is the new money number, right? And how does, how does the implementation of that get worked out? Is that something we do, is that something the association does? Do we have to agree to it, how does that work?
So during the negotiation process, the parties will agree on whatever the new money amount percentage is going to be. And behind that is the models. So by September 30th, I think we have technically agreed to this step, I will give the association a list of all the current teachers, their FTE, and where they sit on the salary schedule. And then what I do is I assume everybody will advance a step during the next however many years we're talking about. Divide the number, each, oh, and then play with the base. And then we kind of play with that to determine it. The last time around, we had to twerk it a little bit when we decided to do three. Twerks are really bad.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's not working.
The number, to do the 3%. But as long as Lisa and I agree that the new number percentage is what we agreed to at the end of the modeling, we're all set. Because the other thing that will happen is, assuming you've settled a school year, is that people will retire or resign, change columns, or whatever, that changes their compensation, and that's breakage. We can go in either direction. So we agree that it's the model we picked in September, and we don't make modifications as we go forward. Somebody gets a little more, somebody gets less.
Does new money include changes in cost for healthcare?
No, not technically. A quarter percent in salary is about the same as a percent in health insurance contribution. At least that was the number two or three years ago.
And I invite our association reps, if you want to contribute anything at this time, get a couple minutes, a few comments. I really, I know that we all appreciate you coming tonight.
Sure. Bob Gerwitz, I think Cindy did a wonderful job of explaining the whole process. I just wanted to clarify something because you said that finality was an imposed contract. Typically, a contract is where two people have decided to accept it. So I think a better term would be imposed working conditions. So, just a fine point, but great job. Thank you.
I don't ever want to be involved in that, by the way. You want to know my deal. And sorry for the, you know, micro machine delivery, but...
And I do appreciate all the work that administrators and board members have done in the subcommittee, there's been a lot of work, I think, over the last year to set us off.
It already feels better. You know, it never felt bad for me in the last 10 years, but it already feels better. You have a really professional group.
So, thank you very much, Cindy. I appreciate that. And need a motion to go into executive session for negotiations discussion?
Almost.
Okay, we're going to move around the corner.